At six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mike Matherley.
Here.
Tracy Pugh.
Yeah.
Dave Rockwell.
Here.
Gary Rowe.
Here.
Dr. Stoner Harris. Dr. Stoner Harris.
Oh, she is just.
Megan Wilson.
Here.
Terrell Williams.
Eric. Dr. Stoner Harris is in the meeting. I don't know if she was promoted to. She a co.
She just, she just called.
It wouldn't let me unmute myself before.
Alright, so all present and accounted for. Everybody please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, approval of the Board of Education minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Also move second.
And properly moved and seconded. Roll call.
There's a correction. Sorry. I just have a simple correction and I can send it to Leslie. For myself, for something, I could point it out if you need to know exactly what it is.
I just stated for the record, I suppose.
Okay. Um, it is, hold on, I'm trying to pull it back up. And. I really just wanted, want it to clarify, wanted to clarify what I was saying in, um. Oh man, sorry. I'm getting. In my report. From the last meeting. Um. I just shared the story about a student, but I wanted to clarify the second sentence. It says, you know, what the second sentence says, I, I think it leaves out my point in terms of. Our need to monitor how we. Decide on punishment, consequences, whatever we want to, however we want to describe it for behavior. And so I, I don't think that second sentence. Accurately captures what I said, and so I can send that to Leslie tonight. And it won't be long, I promise you. It won't be a long statement, but I just wanted to say what I, what I wanted to have the same meaning in writing as what I had when I said it.
Okay. Yes, if you can please just email me that, I will make the correction. So, thank you.
So then we will not vote to approve these minutes at this time?
Correct. And then we'll just add it on to the next board meeting, so.
Alright. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
None at this time for me.
No additions or deletions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I will second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Special item, State Scholar ISAC Certificates of Achievement Recognition. Rock Island High School Principal, Mr. Jeff Whitaker will introduce the ISAC State Scholars. Mr. Whitaker.
Alright, thank you very much. Um. So yeah, each year, the Illinois State Assistance Commission recognizes high school seniors as Illinois State Scholars for exceptional academic achievement. Honors are chosen based on a combination of exemplary ACT or SAT scores. And sixth semester, a sixth semester class rank. These students represent approximately the top ten percent of high school seniors from seven hundred and thirty-seven high schools across the state of Illinois. Uh, for the class of twenty twenty-two here at Rock Island High School, we have seventeen seniors who will be honored today. Uh, first up, Joseph Brune. Ian Empen. Leila Eggbrood. Phoebe Fuller. Grace Gustafson. Ashley Hegan. Add two. Tiana Jackson. Drew Jardine. Pele. Hunter Melody. Elena Muller. Favor Noya. Kamara Seko. Chloe Shomo. Anna Vermeer. And Za Win. And so I just want to congratulate all of these, all of these students. It's always an incredible achievement, but given the last two years with COVID. Being able to achieve the SAT, ACT scores that they did and maintain the GPA and the class rank what they did. Um, it's, it's pretty spectacular. So congratulations to all seventeen and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Onto board member reports. We will start out in Cyberland. Dr. Stoner Harris.
Alright.
Dr. Stoner Harris.
I'm here. I do not have a report.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Williams.
I just want to say, uh, welcome back to everyone, teachers, students, staff, stakeholders. Um. Hopefully everyone's staying safe and healthy. Just a short comment on my travels back to DC from winter break. I listened to a podcast about. The integration of schools. It was a his, you know, a historical account of the process of the integration of schools in the, in the sixties in New York. Um, and what I took out of it was. Um, the processes that we are following right now to try to implement change in our districts are the same. Committees, reports. Given to school boards and superintendents. Uh, slow, slow reactions, uh, to change, resistance to change. Privilege people being able to stop change. Uh. And here they are now, sixty years later, and. Uh, schools still aren't integrated. And so it just made me think and give me pause to ponder. Uh. Are we going about this the right way? Uh. What I also took away from it was. Uh. Parents really have power. In, in, in affecting change in school districts. Uh, we've been fortunate enough sitting on the school board and I'm, I'm saying as school board member that we haven't really felt the wrath of that power. Uh. But I. I don't think it's something that we should wait for to try to tackle some of the problems and the issues that plague the district. And so. Um. Just thought it was a interesting thing, you know, to hear and, and think, yeah, there's a. There are a lot of things that have plagued a lot of school districts for a really long time and we, we have our work cut out for us. So. I'm up to the task. Traveling back and forth is, is tiresome, but I'm, I'm up for the task and really looking forward to some of the things that we're, we're moving towards as a district. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
I'm gonna ask for this. Similar reports from Black Hawk Area Special Ed District and Head Start Policy Council, like all the, all other school institutions dealing with COVID. Uh, lots of staff out, lots of students out, trying their best to keep their staffing levels up and do what they need to do. That's not news to anybody, but that continues. And, you know, who saw this latest, uh. Latest variant coming and its effects on us. So hats off to all of them and to our own staff too for their. Diligent and downright courageous work and keeping things going. That's what I have.
Mr. Rockwell?
I have no report.
Mr. Pugh?
Oh, yeah, um. Last school board meeting, I allowed myself, my passion to get, take advantage of me. And I just want to apologize for that. And, uh, I just want everybody in the school district to do well. And that's.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Ms. Wilson?
Your report.
Alright, for me, two things. One, tomorrow night, we are starting back up with the graduation requirements committee. I am sitting on that as a representative of the school board. So as. Happenings unfold in that meeting, um, report back to all of you, let you know what's going on. And likewise, the communication channel, back to me, please, any feedback. Comments that you have, any questions that you may have, so that we can help make sure that. We're, we're heading down the path that we do want to go. And then secondly. One of the items on the agenda tonight is, it's a normal item and it is donation, an approval of donations. Why we approve them, I don't know, but it's the way it is. I think it's just a great way for us to see. What's being done and, and people being so giving into our schools and our district. And I don't know how many items are on there, but the vast majority of them. Uh, related to the giving tree that was done up here at the high school. And there, I don't think there's any question as far as how hard this year, last year, the year before. Um, has been for teachers and staff and administrators in school districts across the country. Uh, but even with all of that going on, there was a, a group made up of teachers, paraprofessionals, counselors. Community members, I'm sure I'm missing the title, but there was a group of selfless people that got together. Um, and did a giving treat where they were able to serve thirty-four families. Is my understanding that they were able to, uh, help raise funds for and get gifts to those families so that they could have a holiday. So. We hear of all the stressors and the difficulties and Megan lives it, being an educator herself. Uh, but it, it's just nice to know that teachers are, and staff and community members are still willing to go above and beyond. To help address some of those extras for our students, uh, that maybe they would have a, a better holiday season than what they normally would have. So. Uh, the, the donations that are listed on there are individuals, employees of the district, community members. Uh, community organizations and community businesses. So I was very much so a, a group effort and to each and every one of you. Um, I'm going to say thank you on behalf of the district for helping to make sure that. Uh, at, at least some of our families that maybe wouldn't have had a holiday, um, had a little bit better of a one. So thank you for that. And to that, Dr. Lawrence, I'll pass it on to you.
Sure. Well, I'll, I'll keep my brief. I do have a, a few things. Um, you know, we kicked off the year on January third. Um, not like we normally do where normally it's a, a time of a, you know, full day in person. We're all doing lots of them. Training from the T and L division and that whole bit. But this year we still had a thing. It's reflect, recover and rebuild. Uh, it was more, uh, schoolwide based. Um, all of our staff members had the opportunity to log in and do some virtual professional development. But one of the activities that I had a chance to be a part of was, um, we got a chance to listen to a student CQ team. There's a student CQ team that's been created. We talked so much about, um, the work that our, our, the adult CQ team does in our district, but it was, um. It was visited by more than a hundred and thirty-three of our, um, staff members from Rock Island High School and Thurgood Marshall. And some of us from the district level too. And we just had the opportunity to hear from students through their eyes with respect to. You know, some of the pieces that impact our CQ work, you know, whether you're talking about, um, microaggressions and the impact that that can have in classrooms and such. Um, to just, again, listening to students, having them lead the discussion and having us as adults chiming in with, uh, with, with. Positive comments, asking questions and such. So that was just a, a huge piece to have them interact with staff members on January third. And I know that that's going to be something that we continue throughout the year. Um, and then just yesterday, had a chance to meet, uh, meet in person with my student. Uh, my superintendent student advisory council. Um, second meeting with that group, we had a chance to spend our time going over, um. Always leave time to hear from them to see what's on their mind, see how they're doing. But we also had a chance to look at the draft equity statement. And we did a little jigsaw with the six items that are tied to our core values. And again, just an amazing group of students to share. How they interpreted, what they feel it says through their own eyes. Um, you know, the, the message that they feel it gives, but then also some things that they feel. Might be missing in terms of moving the, uh, the, uh, the work forward. And so it was huge to get comments from them. Uh, so I was happy to do that piece. And then, um, finally, I know we, uh, you know, we won't be in session on Monday, but Monday, January seventeenth, we recognized Dr. Margaret King Jr.'s holiday. And, you know, I, I know that that's coming up. Um, I know that there are normally a number of programs that go on throughout, um, Rock Island community. You know, the last two years I had a chance to attend at the, at the Dr. Margaret King Community Center. But I would just say, um, you know, let's use this as a day to remember what Dr. King stood for, the message that he's. Um, shared so many years ago that we still try and live up to today. Um, and just use it as a day to, to reflect, you know, almost to go with the. With the title we had about reflecting, recovering and rebuilding. I just think those types of messages are so inspirational and encouraging. And kind of grounds us on where we're at in today's society, where we need to keep moving. So I hope that everyone will take some time on that day. I know we're off from school. But take a little bit of your time to just remember what Dr. King's message was. It's a be a part of some of these programs in the district. And that's all my report.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence. RIA president, Mr. Andrew Baines.
No report.
No report. Very good. Communications, are there any requests from community members to comment or speak on agenda or non-agenda items?
Yep.
Okay. Five, uh, a request for future agenda items?
I do have, um. Two requests, actually, and these are not new requests, but I'm just circling back around to them because we haven't received this information yet. Um, we. Previously, um, were told that we would get information on certified staff demographics in terms of. What's the staff we're living in Rock Island versus other areas? We're supposed to get that in our HR report. That we received last month. But we did not. Um, and then we also were supposed to get new hire data. Um, in terms of demographics, you know, broken down into demographics, race, gender to help us. Get a snapshot of. How or what kind of impact we're having in terms of increasing our diverse hires. And so. We did not get either of those as we were supposed to in our, in the HR presentation. And so I'm just. Putting those back out there again as information items that are being requested.
Okay, yep. Uh, Mr. Egan, cold breeze.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Dr. Stoner Harris, in our report for the new hires, that isn't, wasn't our report and it is in our quarterly report. The strategic plan for our new hires and the demographics, because those are measures. That, uh, we do report on. So, um, our quarterly report last year for strategic measures, our new hires, we had seventy-five percent of the known positions. Were minority hires at the end of December. And so this is a reminder, and then at the, just two other. Points that we do like to monitor, they're not part of the plan, but we've been asked before. At the end of June last year, we were at fifty-five percent with eleven positions being filled and six of the positions being filled with minorities educators. And at the beginning of August, we were at thirty-three percent, uh, with a total of twenty-four educator positions that were opened and filled. And eight of those being filled with minority educators.
So can, can you provide that again in writing? Can we have that those demographics broken down, not just diverse hires, but. What the diversity, what aspect of diversity was present in those hires? And can we?
Those are things, if that's gonna, yeah, those are things that can be. I would definitely would, we're not against that. It's just, we want to make sure we're providing what is being required. So I would, I would highly encourage that we can bring that possibly to the DLT. And if those are metrics that we want presented, absolutely. Those are things that we can present, because we don't want to not share what is being asked. So what you're requesting, Dr. Stoner Harris, absolutely. But I would just like to, if this is what we're going to consistently be asked of, absolutely. Let's. Make sure we're adding that to our plan. And then we will continue to provide those metrics for you.
If I, if I could add, I don't think we're talking about changing our metrics or our measures. That's set on the strategic plan. I think some of these additional pieces, Dr. Stoner Harris, that you're asking, when you talk about diving more into the, when we say, you know, seventy-five percent or. Three of the four positions that were open at that time, seventy-five percent of them were, were, um, minority teachers. You're saying you want to know if they're a, a, a Hispanic person or African-American person. Again, I'm not going to ask your purpose. I'm, I'm not gonna, and I'm not going to ask your purpose for why. What the.
Well, I can tell you my purpose. I can tell you. Uh, purpose, the purpose is, you know, to have an accurate reflection of what our diversity looks like. So to be transparent with. To not just say diverse, but to actually. Give a snapshot or give that view of what that diversity looks like, because, you know, we're, we're, we've had many conversations about. Why diversity is important and, you know, whether we're talking about students seeing, uh, certified staff that look like them, that are representative of them. Um, the knowledge and experience that, you know, diverse staff come in with based on their own personal backgrounds, demographic backgrounds. And so it is important to understand what that diversity looks like, not just, you know, lump it into a big group. And say diversity, because it can look a number of different ways and still not be representative of our students.
I, that, that's kind of how I perceive what you're requesting. I would definitely recommend if we, just so we can get to what is requested again. If we can bring this to DLT, absolutely, that so that we can come out and ever, we're on the same page. I. Yeah, we want to make sure our report is providing the data that, um. The district understands is useful to help move us forward. If that's something that we need to change some things, then let's follow our protocol and bring that to DLT.
And I don't think that, I'm not asking for, excuse me, I'm not asking for that to be a part of the strategic plan and report. I'm asking simply for what we asked for before. And, and we were told that we were going to get it in the HR presentation and we did not. And so it's no different than what we asked for before.
Actually, Dr. Stoner Harris, you got the information, but we didn't break it down to the specificity that you're requesting. And so we will get that information. We'll not only break it down by. The minority breakup of the new, uh, hires or what have you in the district, but we will have it broken down by the demographics so that you're able to see that.
Yep.
Thank you.
So. And then also it's forty-two percent of our educators.
Say it again.
Forty-two percent of our educators live in the Rock Island Mylan School District.
So that was the other piece of information you requested. How many of the staff members live within our school district?
Yeah.
Is there further breakdown that's requested for that piece?
Yeah, I just think, hey, that's, that's, this isn't, I mean, we really shouldn't be talking about this right now. It's not, not a topic on the agenda. I think we need to capture Dr. Stoner Harris's requirement. If, if we need clarification on what she's asking for, we can communicate that later. Uh, but we should capture this and move on.
Thank you.
Any other future agenda items requested? Onto the blanket motion. Are there any items?
Mike, just one.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I know we got our, uh, survey results back as a district. Is there a ten or a plan to share? Those results out at, at the district level? Um, I'm sure that, that they're in the BLTs, they're being shared all that BLTs. But is there any intent to share that, uh, the results of that data out, uh, at the district level?
Are talking from the satisfaction. Oh, the satisfaction survey data, Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Yes, that will be shared. And again, that all, unfortunately, quarter one with items, we know there wasn't a, a whole lot of data that was there quarter one, but now that we're into quarter two. Uh, that def, that information will definitely be shared at the district level. Um, and I know that this week, we have a district leadership team meeting where. We get to discuss quarter two, um, data. Um, and I, again, I'll use this as a time to put out that request for board members. I know that. Normally there were two board members on that committee and now I don't have any on that committee. So I put that out, uh, to find that if I have any that would be inter. Available as a part of the, the, uh, the group, uh, and, and what's, uh, expected in that DLT team. But yes, quarter two. After our meeting this Friday with DLT, uh, that then allows us to bring fourth quarter two, uh, report and data, which will have. Uh, everything that was missing or not available in quarter one. So you will get satisfaction survey, uh, you'll get, uh, academic data and such. And that'll be shared at our next upcoming, uh, at the next, uh, board meeting opportunity. You know, we have a, a new breakdown with. Uh, when we can share data with respect to business on one meeting. Um, courageous conversations during the second meeting. So at our first opportunity, we will share the, uh, quarter two report, which has all of that data.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Blanket motion. Are there any items requesting to be removed from the blanket prior to approval? Prior to voting? Alright, uh, none appearing. I will entertain a motion to approve the blanket as presented.
So move.
Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Dr. Stoner Harris.
Yeah.
Dave Rockwell.
Yeah.
Tracy Pugh.
Yeah.
Terrell Williams.
Yes.
Megan Wilson. Yes, Gary Rowe.
Yes.
Mike Matherley.
Yes. On to item six, a ten-year life safety survey proposal. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the proposal. For the ten-year life safety survey from Lega Architects and the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Entertain a motion.
So move second.
And properly moved and seconded, uh, discussion on the topic. Not it.
Unless there's any questions with respect to it, it's just, it's our, it's our annual ten-year, uh, report on safety within our buildings. And so again, this is a report that every year or every ten years. We work with, uh, we work with the architects to go through and ensure that, uh. That we're meeting safety guidelines. Uh, they give us a report. They'll, they'll share any, um, any of their findings that may need to be, uh, updated, worked on or what have you. And then we have to make sure that once we've, uh, uh, completed all of those items, they, they're put back into the system and ready for the next ten years. So.
And these are just for two specific buildings.
These are for the two buildings that were not completed with the other buildings that we did prior pre-COVID. So this will be for the high school and the Center for Math and Science, which has not been done yet, because when we did the last cycle, it wasn't up to be done. It wasn't ten years old.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Tracy Pugh.
Yeah.
Dave Rockwell.
Yep.
Gary Rowe.
Yes.
Terrell Williams.
Yeah.
Megan Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Stoner Harris.
Yeah.
Mike Matherley.
Yes. Alright, six P, Freedom of Information Act request. The district received a FOIA request and responded in the. All right, six B, uh Freedom of Information Act request, the district received a FOIA request and responded in the five-day time limit. To Miss Jen Kate Well, uh who requested the name of the firm selected for the construction management services. Item seven A, Business Finance, Dell Laptop Educator Device Acquisition. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the acquisition of quantity of one hundred Dell Latitude thirty-three-ten laptops from C D W. In Vernon Hills, Illinois, at a total cost of seventy-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars. Funding will be provided by the Digital Equity Grant. I'll entertain a motion for the approval.
Also move.
Properly moved and seconded discussion. These are new laptops or the replacement cycling out inventory?
That's correct. When we have these grant funds, we're trying to apply them appropriately and use them effectively to help our educators.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yeah.
Megan Wilson, yes, Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Yes. Seven D, Active Panel Device Acquisition for R I H S. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the acquisition of twenty-five Promethean Active Panels from C D W and Vernon Hills. Uh at a total cost not to exceed one hundred seven thousand five hundred dollars. Funding to be provided by Digital Equity Grant. I'll entertain a motion for the approval. Then properly moved and seconded, uh Mr. Beavens, these are new devices that are on wheels. I think we approved some of these a couple meetings ago.
We had seventy-nine that were approved before, and we're looking, especially at the high school, which is the pinnacle of this district. Want to make sure that we're putting forth the efforts to make sure that when they leave, they remember what they had here.
Any questions at all on this item? Roll call please.
Megan Wilson? Yes, Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Stoner Harris?
Yes.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Dave Ruffel?
Yes.
Mike Manley?
Yes. Seven C, R I H S Student Business and Library Lab Device Replacements. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the acquisition of one hundred and twenty Dell OptiPlex thirty-ninety desktops. Uh and twenty-one Acer C A twenty-four twelve Chrome bases with licenses from C D W and Vernon Hills, Illinois. At a combined cost not to exceed uh one hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars. Funding to be provided by Digital Equity. I'll entertain a motion for the approval. Properly moved and seconded, Mr. Beavens.
Well, this is what I'm excited about, because all the business labs at the high school will now be fully updated and even with better monitors. So um this, this is a very good thing for the high school, so I appreciate the approval.
Excellent. Any questions on this? Roll call please.
Dave Ruffel?
Yes.
Dr. Stoner Harris?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Tracy Pugh? Mike Manley?
Yes. Uh seven D, uh the new scholarship fund, Exelon uh Exelon Generation. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a new account to be opened up at Black Hawk Bank and Trust for the Exelon Generation Scholarship Fund. Mr. Beckwood?
Uh we received some funding from Exelon for three of our students at the high school, twenty-five hundred dollars apiece. Establishing the separate account will just differentiate the funds, keep it separate and we can, it's for tracking purposes and auditing purposes.
Is that not a part of the education foundation?
No.
No, and actually, actually, this was a, this sparked up from a conversation. I had a chance to uh to meet with Mr. Gordon Harris, uh who works with Exelon. Their energy company, uh and I know that I think that their plant is in Cordova. Uh and again, his, his company wants to reach out and just build relationships with students. We talk about C T E, we talk about new partnerships. And so um it's, uh it's always great when you can uh meet a business partner who comes to the table. With check in hand, ready to say, we want to, we want to just interest our students in the field of energy potentially. And so they have three, uh this is their first year, uh having three uh scholarships that are going to benefit three students. They have some um, some very uh uh minor guidelines that we'll look at doing, but um it was just great to have a meeting and I said, Dr. Ruggers, we were part of the conversation with Mr. Harris.
Yeah, so those scholarships will be specific to students who want to pursue STEM or vocational past path high school.
Are they available for seniors this year?
Yes, so they will start this school year and be available to those seniors as they move forward, and then they're hoping that it's an annual contribution that they give us.
I'd just like to add, I had a similar experience with Exelon when I worked for Western Illinois University in the Quad Cities. Um they are trying hard to be a good corporate citizen and to, as Dr. Lawrence said, to uh. Uh encourage students to seek STEM careers and uh anything that helps our students that way is, is all the good. So happy to see this.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, Dr. Lawrence, I think I asked this in our pre-meeting, have we, I guess, set up a, the process or committee for how we're going to go about. Awarding these scholarships. I know with being involved in uh the education foundations process, it's, it's. It's a task getting applications, reviewing them and selecting candidates, so.
No, we haven't, we haven't, uh again, this was a meeting that took place probably the last week in December, right before the break. Right before the end of the uh first semester, so uh we will sit down and look at, again, some of the um, uh the soft skills and the. Uh the soft requirements that it will take for these positions. Uh but again, this is definitely something that will be done um in the very near future. This was just, like I said, we just had one conversation, two conversations, and they were ready to be a part of the district. And anytime they can come with, with a, with a check in hand to say, we want to show you our support, we'll, we'll sit down and we'll work through um. We'll work through those logistics to ensure that um we meet the guidelines, the soft guidelines that they may have for us.
I would suggest that Monta Ponteiro might have some guidelines for similar scholarship to share with you. And we may be able to adapt that to make Exelon happy and, and make it reasonable for the students, so.
Thank you for sharing that.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Uh do a roll call please.
I didn't get the motion. Yeah, we need a motion for this one.
I make a motion that we approve the new account. It's a little different to make a motion to bring money in instead of sending out, so I'm gonna.
I got that in. Okay, Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Dr. Stoner Harris? Dave Ruffel?
Yes.
Megan Wilson? Yes, Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Mike Manley?
Yes. All right, seven E, Eugene Field Life Board Replacements. Recommended the Board of Education approve uh the purchase with Everwhite Corporation of Pennsylvania. The cost of thirteen thousand six seventy-eight eighty-five. Here, funds will be utilized for this purchase. I think these are to replace the dry erase boards in the rooms, correct?
Any questions about that purchase?
Entertain a motion for. Properly moved and seconded, roll call please.
Dr. Stoner Harris?
Yes.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Dave Ruffel?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Mike Manley?
Yes. Armed to eight personnel, A A. Uh non-licensed hall monitor slash security position wage increase. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a minimum hourly wage of fourteen forty-five. For all non-licensed hall monitor security positions starting January one, twenty twenty-two. In response to the Illinois Minimum Wage Law, entertain a motion to the approval.
Also move.
Properly moved and seconded. Mr. Colbries?
Uh so this is, this request is in response to, obviously, minimum wage is going up. And our non, sort of, our non-licensed paraprof, or hall monitors will be affected. Uh it did go into effect uh January first. Uh currently, just to explain, so our RISPA organization requires certification in paraprofessionals. Uh through the last four or five years, we negotiated with RISPA to, to help hire individuals to work. Uh as hall monitors in the, in the building. And so we had a different pay rate because of their certification. If you're paid as a para, you're going to be paid according to the RISPA uh collective bargaining agreement. And if you are not a para, para-certified individual, you'll get paid at a different rate. Uh this rate is based to off of two dollars off of the first step of the RISPA C B A. And I stress that because if, if this does get approved, this might be the model we follow, will be two dollars until we have to. Until there's another reason we have to address that. But that does make um a much more competitive rate. And just like all our positions, this position is extremely important um for uh the flow and success of our buildings. We'd like to uh in, increase that two dollars basically less than the starting wage of a para.
Any questions or comments?
General question, I think I've asked this before. Uh are we getting the pool of candidates? That we need when we're paying fourteen forty-five an hour?
We think, we, based on the market, we think this will be competitive because also they do still get the benefits and pension that the district provides. So it is, it is attractive. Uh we're hoping this will help increase that. And that'll be something, that's one of the measures we would follow. If we suddenly, we were just not. Um you guys have seen what starting wages on different services are. Definitely has also helped influence like, okay, what's the market telling us that we need to place this?
We just have to make sure that we're, we're getting the quality people we need uh with our students, you know, so. I always open the pain a little bit more, it's a big difference, but uh I, I support this to move in the right direction anyway, so.
Absolutely.
Are we understaffed at this, with this?
This year is unique and a lot, a lot of changes, not only with wages, with um student needs. So I don't know if I can accurately answer that. Previously, I think we were, we were staffed right at the mount, depending who you talk to, someone would say, hey, we're, we need more. But that's, I hear that all the time because of my position. Um but uh I, I think it's definitely under review. It is definitely under review. Are we staffed accordingly? So um we hopefully will be able to, if we are going to be presenting more, we'll be able to explain to you why.
Any other questions or comments? Has been properly moved and seconded, uh roll call please.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Terrell Williams? Dave Ruffel?
Yes.
Dr. Stoner Harris?
Yeah.
Mike Manley?
Yes. Eight D, Substitute Teacher Bonus Proposal. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve uh preparation time compensation of sixteen dollars and fifty-five cents. Per scheduled preparation for substitute teachers and a three hundred dollar bonus for all substitute teachers. Who work twenty days, forty days, sixty days and eighty days, beginning January one, twenty twenty-two. Through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, I'll entertain a motion for the approval. Been properly moved and seconded, Mr. Colbries?
So as all of you know, we, um if you aren't aware, we have required more from our subs and more numbers from substitutes than ever before. Uh this year, and just based on the COVID procedures and everything is going on. Our substitutes have been asked to do quite a bit. So we've been informed of the, the load of, the workload that's being asked of them. Uh we've met with some of our substitutes and then also looking at some, what are the other districts doing? We do need to be, um first of all, compensate them for the work they're doing. Second, uh continue to be competitive because the pool of substitutes, all the school districts in Quad Cities are needing subs. So we are in constant competition. So the, this request is one, addressing the fact that substitutes. When they cover, for instance, a teacher, they have a prep time in their schedule. Many times, just like our, what we're asking from our regular educator, our full-time educators, we're asking them to cover during that prep time. So we want a type, we want a compensation for them. So you can see that we have a compensation rate based on the daily rate being provided. So if I have to cover a class during my prep time, I get a compensation just like everyone else. Um or like everyone else, not just like everyone else. Also, trying to, to show our substitutes that we do, the, we tremendously rely on them. Um we definitely want to support them. The bonus is being recommended is that if they do, every twenty days. They would get a, a three hundred dollar bonus if they would work within our district um at substitute capacity. So uh we couldn't be doing, we really, honestly, in my opinion, we wouldn't have the doors open without our substitutes at this moment. And uh we have been nothing but pleased with what they're doing for us, and so we want to make sure we're compensating them and keeping them here.
Even are there other districts that are doing bonus programs like?
Yeah, so uh one of our neighboring districts has one almost identical to this. But then we've also had other districts in Illinois that have some type of bonus program, program. Rates are going up, so that's why this is the cover this year, then we're going to review it. Um across the river, uh we have, one of the larger districts is got, has always had the highest rate. Um so staying in competition with them and also supporting, we do want to communicate with each other. We don't want any school, any school district going without, but our purpose is to make sure our students are taken care of, so. We're addressing that rate also.
I think it's a nice creative solution to a difficult problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Corey, do we offer bonuses to any other employee population in the district?
Not so much, no, I don't think so. Oh, yes, say, thank you, thank you. So the um R I A, the teacher um union. There is a attendance bonus in the collective bargaining agreement. So every quarter, if they have perfect attendance, they get a bonus. And this is the second year of that. There's incentive, like the, sorry, go ahead.
No, how much is that bonus?
The two twenty-five? I, I think it's two twenty-five a quarter. I have to double check, two twenty-five, two fifty a quarter.
Okay. And we're looking at making long-term changes to substitute, that's why this is only approved through May twenty-seventh.
Yeah, yeah, we want to make sure we're not jumping ahead of it, and then suddenly we don't have the need, I don't, I, I can't speak to, I, I don't even talk to anymore. So yes, it is, right now we're addressing the need, we're going to review the need at the end of this year.
Any, uh, any other questions or comments on this item? It's been properly moved and seconded, roll call please.
Dr. Stoner Harris?
Yeah.
Dave Ruffel?
Yes.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Mike Manley?
Yes. Item eight C, District Safety Manager. It is recommended the Board of Education approve Charles Butler for the position of District Safety Manager for the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two school year. At the salary of sixty-eight thousand forty-one dollars, I'll entertain a motion for the approval.
Mike, can we, can we, are we planning on going to executive session to discuss this, or?
We certainly can. I just wanted to entertain the motions first and then any discussion, uh we can, we can do that. So it has been properly moved and seconded. Uh if you want to uh make a, an motion to adjourn to executive session, we can do so.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Your second.
All right, there is a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss employee matters. Has been properly moved and seconded, uh roll call please.
Gary Rowe?
No.
Okay, Dr. Stoner Harris?
Yes.
Dave Ruffel?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Tracy Pugh?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Mike Manley?
Yes. It will turn and we will be back, connection will be taken. We will call Terrell and Tiffany, are you with us?
I am.
Dr. Stoner Harris?
I'm here.
Oh, very good, thank you. Then I will reconvene a regular session of the school board at seven thirty PM, roll call, please.
Dr. Stoner Harris?
Yes.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yeah.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Mike Manley?
Yes. And we do have a properly moved and seconded motion, I will reread it. It is recommended the Board of Education approve Charles Butler for the position of District Safety Manager for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year at the salary of sixty-eight thousand forty-one dollars. Roll call, please.
Tracy Q?
Yes.
Dave Rockwell?
Yes.
Gary Rowe?
Yes.
Terrell Williams?
Yes.
Megan Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Stoner Harris?
Yes.
Mike Manley?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Q, and good luck in your role. Why did I say Butler? I went to school with Charles Pugh, okay? I'm so sorry. Mr. Butler. Let me totally, I think he's even checked me out at Hy-Vee.
Yes.
With no additional business to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Also move.
Properly moved in seconded, all in favor? I, all opposed? Thank you, the meeting is adjourned.